The meeting for the school board of Putnam County is officially called to order at 3:30 PM Tuesday, August the 8th, 2023. Good afternoon to all of you and thank you for joining us today. At this time, we will be led in a pledge of allegiance by Mrs. Holly Pickens and then I will do the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come today to give you thanks, to give you honor, to give you praise. God, thank you for a successful school year last year. How you watched over us, kept our children safe, going to and fro, for that we say thank you. And now, God, we come again at the beginning of another school year and we ask for your divine guidance, God, over our superintendent, over the board, over the leadership team, every administrator, teacher, student, parents, our bus drivers, our crossing guards, our food service workers, our maintenance, God, all of us, because it takes all to make this district as great as it is. And so, God, we just pray your mercy, your divine guidance, that all of our children will come excited and ready to learn and that our teachers have been revitalized over the summer. And, God, whatever comes up, we know, God, that there are those that you have put in place that will help see us through. Now, God, we just thank you and we give you glory. And now, God, conduct this meeting. Guide our hearts, our minds, our thoughts, that everything we do, God, will be decent and in order and, God, it would benefit those our stakeholders and our children. In Christ's name we pray. Again, we say thank you for joining us this afternoon. At this time, regarding our presentation, item number two, construction update by Mr. Bowlin, will be given at our next school board meeting on August 22nd. At this time, we will have our kids tag art, Linda Myers' office, and we will be introduced.
Thank you, madam. Good afternoon. My name is Brenda Bridges. I am the deputy tax collector for the tax collector's office. And on behalf of the Honorable Linda Myers, I'd like to extend her apologies for not being here today. Something about grandkids and going out and, you know, spending some time with them while they're here from California, so.
Ah, don't blame them.
So I think their schedule kind of pulled her in a different direction. So again, her apologies for not being here. We appreciate the opportunity to be able to make this presentation. So one of the things that we wanted to share with you is the end result of the kids' tag art program and thank the school board and our sponsors for their participation in this So again, this is celebrating the artwork of the fifth grade students in all of the schools and we're proud to say that every fifth grade school in the district is now participating. There are approximately 12 tax collectors that participate in this program statewide and they've raised well over a million dollars that has put money back into the school systems in their prospective counties. Of course, this program would not be possible without the great sponsors and hello, Mike's working magic in the back, I believe, and the amazing school staff. So the principals for all their hard work with these students, so we want to say thank you and recognize them as well. Our sponsors this year were Seminole Electric, TECO Peoples Gas, Beck Automotive, Vulcan Materials, Waste Pro, and Douglas Law Firm. So it is with their sponsorships that we're able to buy the supplies that the children use for this program. It helps offset the cost of some of the production when we go to make the plates and being able to present a plate to each child that participates. So these kids, this artwork that they create, for some of them, this is the only recognition that they may get in their lifetime. And the smiles on their face when they see that plate and it's handed to them is, it is just priceless and it is something that gives us great joy to be able to participate in this program. So these were the top five winners from Browning Pierce Elementary. And as you can see, these children come up with some very creative ideas. We do ask them to give us a little storyline about what they're thinking when they draw their artwork. And so it helps the judges, when they're looking at these plates, to look at where the child was at, what they were thinking when they drew that piece of art. And a lot of times, there are messages that are underlying. So you'll see some of these. A lot of them will express messages of peace and love and togetherness in our community. The top five from the Children's Reading Center. So again, very colorful artwork. There always seems to be a gator every year. And there's certain people that like to pick those. James A. Long Elementary. So the colors are just very, very vibrant and it just makes you want to get into the mind of the child and understand where they're at when they're, when they're drawing these. Kelly Smith. So the one at the top really interests me, all the faces they drew and the, and the caption is "Face the Future." So it really makes you think about, you know, that these children are thinking about their future and what lies ahead for them. Mellon Elementary, the top five there, or Mellon Learning Center, pardon me. Yeah, great works of art. And who knows, some of these children may have things displayed at the Laramore Arts Center sometime in the future. So we'll have to be looking out for that as well. Melrose Elementary. So we go to each school and present their plates and just that recognition. We also highlight them at the fair every year. We have a static booth where we display these and the kids just love bringing their family in and taking pictures near these presentation boards. Middleton Bernie, the top five winners there.
They have football.
Uh huh. Aquila. So it looks like we may have some astronauts among us. Robert Jenkins. Very colorful artwork there.
Look at that farm and that.
Yeah. You want me to back up? And then Mosley Elementary? Yeah. Yeah, it makes you wonder where they get that at, right?
What you wearing? And then one talked about their future. Be kind.
Uh huh. Yeah, just amazing. So we are happy to tell you, and I'm going to ask our Vanna White, our KTA program administrator, Eva Hoddinger, to come up. And this year, we were able to return $12,720-plus dollars to the Putnam School System, to those respective schools. Those plus dollars are from the tags that are sold online. So family members, grandmothers, aunts, uncles can, can go online and purchase those. They also have coffee mugs and mouse pads.
Mouse pads.
So there's several things they can get with their artwork on it. Mm-hmm.
Brenda, before you finish, we need to get a photo.
Picture. Okay, absolutely.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay. And then finally, just to kind of wrap up, this was the seventh year in total and a total of $73,380-plus went back to Putnam County into the arts programs. So thank you.
Brenda, how do you, how do you get the awards to, I'd like the plates to the kids? Wasn't there a big thing?
So what we do each year is once those plates come in, we go to the, the schools themselves and we present, make a presentation to that child of their plate. With the plate, they also get a key fob and there's instruction material in there, how their family can go online and order it. But each child gets a, the plate to display on their family's vehicle. And, and it's interesting for us, when we're walking around downtown or we're out somewhere and we see a vehicle with that tag on it and the people that walk by or the kids that are standing there and they're pointing to people, "This is mine," you know, so they are just so excited to be able to share that information with people. Yeah.
I think we had 686 students for this 2223.
Are there any, are there any guidelines of what kind, you know, anything they're supposed to be portraying or any kind of?
No, we actually leave it up to the child's imagination. We want them to, to send the message that they want to send. We do send all of the markers and things for them because we want to make sure that the colors are bright. So if they're using crayons, sometimes that doesn't show up good when they go to make the plate. So we do send the markers, we send paper for them to draw it on, and then once that tag, that template comes in, it goes to the printer. And they're just phenomenal to see them in person, just the colors. So we also display them in our lobby, in our office. We're working on display boards for our branch offices. And we do an insert in the paper each year that highlights the kids' tag art program. So on the end of each of these tables, I left some of those inserts here that you can take and share with your staff. But we take some of these to the schools as well. But it's, yeah, it's a great honor to be able to go. Eva lets me tag along every now and then and I get to take pictures.
I'm ready for school.
But just seeing those kids and they come up and give you a hug and just, they're just so excited.
Okay. We'll join Ms. Gilchrist up here.
You two hold the mic.
How about, let's put you in.
I'd like one man.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for both of you. Appreciate all you do.
Dang, I should have done the same as you.
I see that photo by there.
I know, I just missed.
I said that was the greatest honor, was somebody to be able to introduce their requirements. I know everybody is glad to do that someday.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brenda.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And most definitely, the comment you made in regards to this may be the recognition that that child gets.
Yes, ma'am.
And who knows, it may bring them out of their shell.
That's right.
So it's great. Thank you.
So Linda, we missed her, but we understand.
Tell her I'll be expecting lunch.
Have a great afternoon.
All right. Okay, next item, public comments. I was told we did not get any. So we are now ready for item D, our public hearing, the adoption of amendment to policy 5330.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we adopt the amendment to policy 5330.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we adopt the amendment to policy number 5330 and second by Mr. Phil Leary. Okay, do we, do we have to call for?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a policy amendment. So, I'm sorry, District one?
Adopt.
District two? District three?
Adopt.
District four?
Adopt.
And hi.
All righty, we finish with that. We will now go to item E, consent agenda. We will be pulling item G2 and that one will probably resurface later, but we're pulling that particular item, G2. All right, we'll start with you, Mrs. Pickens.
I have nothing to pull.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Mrs. Wagner?
I'd like to pull G3, please.
Mr. Leary?
That was mine, too.
Okay, and I don't have anything to pull. All righty.
Madam Chairman, I, I move approval of the consent agenda accepting G3 and G2.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept the consent agenda minus item G2 and G3, and it was seconded by Mrs. Linda Wagner. All right? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers, hear none, our motion carries for zero. Okay, ready, G3.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon, sir.
So G3 is an easement. What's the name of the ice company, Susan?
Thirty-two Degrees.
Thirty-two Degrees. They are requesting an easement off of School Bus Road, which runs behind Interlocken High School or Interlocken Junior/Senior High School, and it's off of Highway 20. I went ahead and printed the map just so you could take a look at it. I think I may have run out, Mr. Superintendent, right before I got, we got to you, so you may want to share down here.
We're good.
No, no, we have the spam.
Oh, I got one. I just kind of help you orient a little bit. Highway 20, if you put it to the bottom, and you should be able to barely make out where it says Highway 20 on the bottom. And then if you look, look for the school buses kind of in the top left quadrant, and then, you know, you have the map oriented correctly. Okay, so their easement is kind of drawn in, in this box to the right. So the idea is you come in off of School Bus Road, I'm sorry, off of Highway 20 onto School Bus Road, and then you would loop into this area and loop out, and the ice machine would be right there in the middle. Now, there may be one or two issues with this, but the fact, and, and I'm speaking for possible safety and security, you may want to consider that when you consider any easement going towards the school. However, we did grant AutoZone the exact same easement coming off of this road on the opposite side of School Bus Road. So right where you see the wooded area directly across School Bus Road, all of that will be AutoZone and that will be traffic coming in just to get to that auto supply store. I don't think the additional traffic from those few cars will cause any much, I mean, cause much of a problem, especially when, when we talk about maybe traffic and things that are that nature. The one concern that I do have is that our attorney required AutoZone to have a $3 million liability policy. So far, this company has provided a $2 million policy. We reached out to them and told them we need the additional million dollars or they, they needed to up the amount of liability insurance. They said, "No problem," but they haven't sent it. And Susan has tried to reach out to them as late as this afternoon, I understand, and I think they're, they're getting the, you're getting the automated message that they're on vacation. So I would, I would, I mean, you, you can consider everything I've said, but if I was to give any kind of recommendation, it would be if you accept everything else that goes with this, I would wait to see if they can provide the other million dollars, so.
Did you, did you have questions?
No, that, actually, that.
That is your question?
That pretty much answered mine.
So Madam Chairman, the AutoZone thing was a little different because the DOT, right away, and their access management plan wouldn't allow, even though that's a huge lot on the corner of School Bus Road and State Road 20. So I was a little more sympathetic to them, you know, having an easement, but as I was brainstorming this morning about how we can make more money, I thought, "Well, we should have actually probably got some compensation for these easements and, and we are responsible for keeping up School Bus Road."
That's correct.
And you look out there, it's on the edges, it's starting to get pretty.
Didn't AutoZone say that they would, they would contribute to the up to, or, or actually maintain it, I think? And that's me, that's me thinking more than me knowing, but when you, when, when you said that, that kind of triggered my memory. I think they did agree to the maintenance of the road or lease up to AutoZone.
Anyway, I think, you know, future reference, and it's probably too late now, as I was telling the superintendent earlier, but I think we should, you know, look at least the opportunity, because these are all for-profit entities. I mean, they're not, you know, nonprofits and they don't have certainly anything to do with the school, although I'm going to ask Mr. Thirty-two Degrees if he'd give the concession stands for the athletic events free ice. But, but at any rate, I don't have a problem with it with respect to if they reach their liability amount. And so, Madam Chairman, I will move approval contingent upon the $2 million bond, $3 million, excuse you, $3 million bond.
I'll second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Phil Leary that we do honor. You say it, Lynn.
No, I just think Thomas.
Oh, okay, I thought, that's why I stopped.
Get me to cut you off.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, all right, that we do allow Thirty-two Degrees the easement that they're requesting contingent upon the fact that they come up with the other million dollars that was requested, the three million, making a total of three million, and it was seconded by Mrs. Linda Wagner in a discussion. Hearing, hearing none, we're ready to vote. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers, motion carries. Okay.
Susan, could you send me their contact information, email it to Thirty-two Degrees?
We are now ready to go into emergency session. We have two items on the emergency list.
Madam Chairman, I'll move approval of L1, the new copier lease for QI Roberts, and obviously justification and explanation, this school starts Thursday.
All right.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept item L1, the new copier lease for QI, and it was seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept item L2, new copier lease, James A. Long Elementary. Justification, same reason as Mr. Leary gave.
Okay, excuse me, start.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept item L2, the new copier lease for James A. Long. Explanation time sensitive, school starts soon. All right, it was seconded by Mrs. Linda Wagner. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposers, none, our motion carries. We are now out of emergency session. We are now ready for a discussion of unfinished business in regards to the student code of conduct revision.
We do.
Who takes care of that for us?
Ms. Drew is here, Diana Drew from Student Services. If you have any questions or concerns, she can answer those for us.
I will say.
Now, oh, excuse me. You go ahead. No, you go ahead.
I will say that I spoke to Ms. Drew and several others because I was going through and, you know, I was being a little nitpicky on some, some items on this, but I just thought this, and it sounds like it can be sort of a, a living document that we can adjust periodically. And I spoke with her and, and our council about, I, I plan to continue going through it and just make it, number one, as clear. We have to use certain legal language and I realize that, but it, if there's anything that confuses me, I'm assuming it's going to confuse parents. So I want it to at least be very understandable in layman's terms as much as we can so that if a parent or a student needs to re, you know, go to that to see if they've done something wrong or to see if they're about to do something wrong, that it's, that it's clear to all of them. So they were kind enough to adopt pretty much, I, I was only able to get through about half of it, but they adopted pretty much all of them. I wanted to especially compliment whoever did, there was some rephrasing of some doc, some portions that I simply didn't, you know, I gave some suggested rephrasing on many things, but there was a couple, I wasn't sure what the purpose was. And I, I reviewed how they ended up today and I was very impressed with the language and, and some of the things were bolded to make certain it was clear instead of sounding contradictory in the one area.
I understand Ms. Drew went over it with a fine-tooth comb and completely reviewed it. And you have any, anything you want to comment about that?
Well, before you comment, because you may, you just may answer mine, I'm just, well, I'm going to say it, but I'll date myself, which is, is, is fine, it's okay, 70. But anyway, back in the day, the students actually had to sign for the code of, student code of conduct. I got it, you gave it to me, and, and then I think, at the discretion of the administrator, homeroom or first period will go through the, the things that were immediate for that child, making sure that they heard it and understood it. I didn't see anywhere where they signed or anything like that, so how do we do it now? Just, just school me.
Yes, ma'am. They still do go over those and we just emailed the principals, just a nice reminder to let them remind the teachers to go over those main sections that students need to know about to start school. So they, they do continue to do that. Since it's a digital document now, just to save money, and it saves quite a bit of money, we, we leave it digital. We leave a few, or a few copies at each school. Especially for the deans, because they really need to mark it up and mark pages and highlight and things like that. So they get some physical copies, but it's mostly digital. So we don't have a physical form that the kids sign off on, online.
So the teacher has one roster?
Right.
Johnny, Susan, et cetera. Okay.
But they do continue to do that and break it up by pages and maybe first period at the junior high school, go through a few pages in the next period, they go through a few pages just so that they make, you know, those rules clear to the students.
Question.
Oh.
So Ms. Drew, the, the student prior to signing has gone through, I mean, they've reviewed it in class over a period of time, is that correct? Or do they sign it first and then review it?
They go through, they don't go through the whole document, but they go through the things that are most pertinent to the daily lives of kids at school. It's just a, it's a large document to do the whole thing.
Got it.
But the reason they put it online digitally is, number one, again, to save money, and number two, that is available to students and parents 24/7.
Right.
So if they have any questions, they don't have to wait for their kid to bring it from school. I mean, it's right there. They can always refer to it and if a dean calls them and their child's having an issue, they can refer to it online and, you know, educate themselves and ask questions and clarify.
Madam Chairman. Go ahead, sir.
And it, oh, go ahead. I was going to say, mine is more or less just skimming and reviewing, refreshing my memory on it, but the section for suspensions and possible expulsion, I think it's, it's great. If, if the parents would, would look at that, they can probably prevent something from happening if they are aware of it, because a lot of times, they've shown up and they have this deer-in-the-head-like look, like, "I didn't know that." And, and if that, but it's there and it's in the language that you spoke of, layman's terms, and they could understand it. So again, great job.
Thank you.
It's what they need. All right, Mr. Leary?
And just a quick question for our board council. Do you think it, it's solid from a legal standpoint for, for any challenges or?
Oh, definitely. You know, as with Ms. I'm sorry.
Wagner.
Wagner.
As she stated, you know, it can be tightened up a little bit and I know that you were working on it very hard, or if there's anything else that needs to be done, you know, we can continue working on it and tighten it.
And we will. And I want to thank you for reaching out because when I sat down and went through several pages and then I compared what I had to what you had, we had some of the same concerns. So that's been addressed and, you know, others might come up, but I think you'll find that a lot of it's been cleaned up. And I did reach out to Board Attorney Carol and she helped me out with one section, because anything that deals with statute, I don't really want to change the wording without conferring with her.
And, and I did want to apologize for not getting those same changes to you. I thought I was on a different timeline and so I had to scoot it over to her rather quickly, but, but any, anything in the future, I'll make sure you see as well because exactly, exactly that, we want it legally sufficient.
And you write it as a living document. So over the years, as things get added and deleted, you know, obviously it helps for another set of eyes to go back over that and try to catch any mistakes. So I want it to be professional, I want it to be clean and understandable, just like you do, so I appreciate that.
No, thank you.
I will say that, I, I just wanted to mention one thing, the part of it that we were, the revisions made from last year, it really, two weeks ago, wasn't as clear as it is now for sure and the way that it's formatted, it's like divided up, it's not in a paragraph. So it was a lot easier to read, so I just wanted to say, thank you.
You're welcome. And it, it turned out to be a good thing that it was pulled for additional time because we had some statutes come out that we needed to add, so it was very timely. because we had some statutes come out that we needed to add, so it was very timely.
Good, good.
And I was just going to tell you, Madam Chairman, I'll date myself, too, I don't know if we even had a code of conduct when I was at school, but we didn't need one, because we had.
They made it up as they went along.
No, we, we had Coach Bennett, and believe me, you didn't have to worry about that, so, um, I, I'll move approval of the, the student code of conduct revision twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept the student code of conduct revision twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four, and second by Mrs. Linda Wagner, um, questions and further discussion regarding? Okay, are we ready to vote?
Thank you, Diana.
You're welcome.
And thank you so much, all in favor, let it be known by I. Aye. Opposers, none, motion carries. Okay. We have no new business, um, we are now ready for our reports by the board members, we're going to start with you, Mr. Leary.
Okay, Madam Chairman, um, and I don't know if you heard it, at the last board meeting, I was talking about, um, having a board policy on purchasing of IT equipment and, and software and hardware, and making sure that it was all compatible and everything, and then, um, and so I put some language together and, and sent it to Susan, and said, so what do we do now? And she said, well, this could be a good internal policy, and I thought, you know, that's probably better in a board policy, so I, I'm, I'm hoping that the superintendent will, you know, in some form or fashion, however you do that, you know, do it as a internal policy, and just make sure that we're, we're all on the same page, and I said.
We're actually going to meet tomorrow, and our executive team, and we'll, we'll review that.
Great, great, um, I don't have anything else, I'm excited about school starting, and so I get to go to three different schools with granddaughters now, and, I don't know, I guess I need to put a taxi lot on my truck, but anyway, so, but, um, looking forward to it.
All right, Mrs. Wagner?
Well, I have to say I'm jealous about the, uh, the grandchildren part, because I'm still waiting for a few of those. Um, hopefully, though, it'll happen, um, I don't have a lot other than I spent, uh, the majority of my time since the last hearing, uh, going through the student conduct, so, um, I am excited for, uh, school to be starting, do want to remind everybody to watch for buses, and please obey the traffic laws. Um, I, I go through a, a school zone, a, as we all do, every single day, and it's just constant, and, and Melrose has a fast flow of traffic through town, they're trying to address, um, but, uh, in my corner of the world over there, I'd really ask parents to watch, Melrose Elementary is right on State, State Road twenty-six, and people just, they just fly by, whether they're just being sleepy in the mornings or whatever, and I try to adjust my schedule to either get there before the school zone or after, but, um, some folks, you know, have to be there, just be careful, and, and do not pass buses, um, just to be really aware, because that's just a big safety thing, and we want our children safe.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Pickens?
I don't have much, um, last night I did go to the seventh and eighth grade orientation at Crescent City Junior Senior High School, and, um, it was extremely well attended, uh, of course, getting their schedules and graduating are always really important things to, um, families and students. Um, Mr. Adams did a, a tremendous job, um, setting pretty high expectations of those young people, and, um, there was a air of a lot of excitement, one little girl was picking up her, her, um, I was doing student information sheets, and she said, I am going to do better this year, I'm going to, I'm going to take this serious, so, um, I said, I'm going to hold you to that, so I kind of wrote her name down, and, uh, hopefully I'll look her up, and she'll be fine. Um, I also am doing my vector, um, training that we got the email for, and, um, I just wanted to mention the comprehensive school safety, I, I think as a former teacher, when it said to, to block the door, um, you know, I thought, put some desks, but the picture in the video is like ten or fifteen desks, I mean, everything pushed against the door, and I thought, wow, it, that picture speaks volumes of how you should do it, you know, not obviously during the lockdown drill, but, um, I was thinking, there's no way a shooter, I mean, they could get through that, but they couldn't get a straight shot at anybody, it was great. And then I also, um, wanted to mention that it's just a six-minute video, um, it's run, hide, fight, and that can be applied to any situation, not a school situation, I, I kind of envisioned, you know, you were, you were at Walmart or something like that, what you need to do, it, it's very informative, very good.
And where did you find this?
Um, it's on that vector training.
Okay.
And, um, then thank you to Linda Myers and her staff and Brenda Bridges for, for, um, doing that tag art, it's really, uh, you know, great to see the artistic ability and thought process of children, so, um, and I'm excited for a new school year, and I'm expecting big things, I love fall sports, and I'm excited about all of that starting.
Okay, all right, thank you so much, uh, just real quick, uh, one of the things that I want to mention, and I'll be getting with Mrs. Whitehurst, I haven't mentioned it to her yet, but things are kind of settling down, and the twenty-year recognition uh, that we did, what we, we had gone to the various schools, and we, anyone who had put in twenty consecutive years in Putnam County, working with our students, we went to their schools, gave them, um, certificates, and you, you would have thought it was a million dollars, we were just saying, thank you for your services. So, as, as, uh, COVID is, is fading in the background, even though there's a little of it out there, we can, we can kind of handle that, so I'd like for that, for the superintendent to think about that. Not right now, because school is starting and everything, yes, sir, we, we certainly don't want to throw a wrench in anything that's going on. And again, I, I, uh, voiced the same sentiment as Mrs. Pickens in regard, all of you in regards to our, our teachers and our students returning to school, and certainly keeping them safe, uh, the maintenance, uh, department, they have, uh, and I can only speak of the one school that's almost right there in my door, and, and they, they keep it looking good, they mow it, and so thumbs up to them, to, to everybody that's done the work that you're doing to make sure that school is ready for our students as they pick up their schedules. Thank you. This is attorney.
Um, I don't think I have anything to report at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Simpson, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, I want to, I think I introduced him at our budget meeting, but I'm going to introduce our new CFO, CFO in waiting, Jonathan Odom, and, um, Jonathan, can you snap up here just a minute, I just want all the.
Could he, could he possibly know that?
Same, just same last name, just coincidence.
The other lady, well, we have to introduce him, you know.
Yeah, yeah, he calls her Rhonda, so, this is Jonathan, and he's going to be standing up there, uh, many times for years to come, so I wanted, wanted y'all to formally meet Jonathan, and, um, all the thousands of people watching us on TV right now will be able to see Jonathan.
Put me on the spot a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, but your smile will get them.
Yeah, Jonathan, any comments, I'm going to put you on the spot, because you, you gotta be able to speak on the spot in public, so.
I mean, I'm, uh, this whole journey, as far as getting here, uh, was unexpected in total, but I'm here, I'm ready, I'm up for the challenge, so I've been planning on being a CFO a few years earlier than expected, but I'm, again, I'm ready.
Very good, and he's one of our own, too, by the way, graduated with a PHS, product of Putnam, yeah. But we're very good, very glad to have you, Jonathan, we've already put him to work, and, um, he hadn't changed his mind yet. He does, uh.
I made a couple of comments.
He does have a pretty good relationship with our current CFO, so I think they've known each other for a few years, so, anyway, welcome, Jonathan, we're very happy to have you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Couple other, um, less exciting things I want to mention, um, I know some of you might have seen in the news about the AP Psychology class, um, you know, this sponsored by the College Board, and I just want to make sure that's been kind of a thing of the news lately, and Ms. France and myself have been on a number of calls with all the superintendents and Department of Education, but just to make sure we all understand, we are, we are going to be providing that course through our ACE program, or Cambridge. So, kids will still be able to earn college credit, we're not going to miss a beat, and, uh, we want to comply with the law and all that, so I just want to make, make sure you understand that we are addressing that. Other districts are doing other things, but, you know, we're following this course, so, Laura, is that pretty much accurate?
Okay.
Um, Ashley McCool asked me to announce that we are doing training for our new, um, program, communication program called Rooms, it's through Apogee, it's just a way that, uh, teachers and parents can constantly stay in communication with each other, and even things like athletic teams can, you know, uh, provide communication to the players, so it has a number of uses, so that will continue to improve our communications. Master Board training is coming up next week, uh, have it on seventeenth, so I just want to make sure you have that on your calendar. Um, we're going to be starting our podcast again, and start recording those, and I talked to Ashley today, we're going to be doing, you know, school people and community people, and may even ask some of you to be interviewed, I do all the interviewing, so it's kind of like, kind of like Johnny Carson, you know, we'll throw in a few jokes and all that. No, it'd be good, it's a good way to kind of communicate, a lot of people listen to podcasts, so I think it's a good way to get our message out there.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Master Board, I know the date, I have the date, the time, I'm not sure. Nine, okay, I would have got there, okay, thank you.
Um, I was able, I, I visited almost every single school during pre-planning, met with all the administrators, and, um, I'll tell you what, it's just a good, good undercurrent of positivity out there, I can say a lot of that, and met with a number of other departments, so I think everybody's really looking for a positive year, and principals are looking at really trying to improve the culture of their school, we started that process last year, you know, we build in those early release days so they can do things with their faculty, you know, really try to build that team, if you will. So, I think it's really paying dividends, and our kids are really going to benefit from it. And finally, uh, we met last week with our architect, and, um, really are getting down to the nitty-gritty on these schools, I mean, we're drilling down to where the windows are located, and, you know, Crescent City High, we're looking at exactly which buildings are going to be built first, and just so many details now, that, um, people are really going to be, uh, pleased, I think, once we start construction. Matter of fact, we're going to go visit a school later this week in another district that is kind of similar to one of the, the plans we have, just see what it looks like, try to get some ideas, and so we should be announcing groundbreaking, you know, coming up soon, Mr. Bowen has all that, I know you're going to share that at the next meeting. Yeah, so, um, anyway, good days are ahead for Putnam County, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right, and just one other thing, you, you sparked my memory when you talked about the schools and the school culture, I thought that was an excellent article with Palacka High, and, and the things that they are doing and getting ready to do and re-implementing, et cetera, and it, it makes for, you know, a fresh start.
Yeah, and you know, if you go up to, when you go up to the school, you'll see, they've kind of had a facelift out front, and, um, I'll just leave it up to you, see if you can notice it.
Okay, I got it.
By the way, all five of those administrators out there are Palacka High graduates.
Yeah, the face.
From the decade of the nineties.
Yep.
So, that's kind of cool, talking about products of Putnam now.
Yes.
Very cool, very excited for our new year.
Okay, anything else to come up with the board? All hearts and minds are satisfied.